We thank you for your guidance and we pray that you continue to guide us and provide the information and the desire to continue to work hard, protect our citizens, and protect the workers of the city as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have to do it every week. Where are we going?
Yep.
I don't want to go back to that, but...
Okay, we need approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Let's go ahead and begin committee reports. Chamber of Commerce, would you like to get it going for it?
Sure.
Well, they help forgive me.
We decided in September, which you know has closed out our largest tourism month, we're thankful for all the groups who hosted events this past month. They brought tax dollars and visitors to Kennet along with those events. This month we saw Fall into Arts, Pretty Bash, Kennet Cruise Car Show, and Delta Fair. And I feel like they were all well organized and well attended, so great job to all those groups. And all the city departments too, who put in a lot of work. I mean, everywhere you looked, there were fresh responders, people had to block off roads, police did a lot of work, so thanks to all those city departments to help with those too. You'll remember earlier this year, we awarded tourism grants to two of those groups. We are waiting for their tourism expense reports now, so we don't have those. When I receive them, we'll pay those bills and then request reimbursement through the City Card office as normal. We have no other tourism requests at this time. Advertisement will slow down greatly for the fall. We really focused on those September events and our spending, and we'll do a little bit of waterfowl tourism for the rest of the year, but we've already allocated that. The only other thing I had was earlier this year, we had made a request to the City Finance Committee about help with a digital sign for the yard, and I was wondering if we have any update on that.
We had a meeting last night, and that was brought up as part of our pending businesses. And we decided to pay for half of that. Half will come out of tourism and half will come out of beautification, with the agreement that the chamber will not charge us for any advertising from now on, if the city wants to put it.
Right, and that's exactly what it's for. So every one of those events that we already advertise for, that's what it's for, give it more exposure. So all those that we talked about, those September events, that's what they're going to be used for. And, you know, anything that the city departments have that they need to do too, that's great. Police department has, wants to advertise there, they can put it up there. The street department needs to hire somebody, we can advertise it on there.
Help wanted, leave it on their part.
When's that something gonna be up? Can I put in an order now?
Well, if that's the case. Agreed, pass.
So MODOI is having an exit land clearing Thursday. We requested because they own pretty much all of, all of that yard that we maintain. So it can go where the sign is currently now, but we asked for their permission to move it out closer to the road, have better exposure, so they'll hear that request on Thursday.
One other thing, if you could in the future, when something that the city is going to have fund or have a parcel, if you can just advertise for bids and get us a, whether you just get one bid off the advertisement or two or three, as finance committee, we probably would need copies of those. It looks better on our, on it.
I see.
And it's just a procedure we have to follow.
Steve, I think Ted, I'll make the motion.
Motion. Okay. We will pay half of that. Second. Okay. Any further discussion on it? My birthday's in August, by the way.
Oh, you advertise birthdays on there too?
I will.
Or feet.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed.
Passes, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, fire department?
Well, finance. That was part of that.
Oh, yeah. Okay, finance, Steve.
Hi. We didn't get ourselves tax numbers for this money. We did receive a million eighteen thousand dollars as part of the CARES Act money that came in since the last council meeting. We don't have all the details on how the money can be spent. I'm sure there'll be some stipulations on there. Most of it has to go towards emergency management. Once we have the details, we'll let you know. As of now, we did receive one million eighteen.
One million eighteen.
Mm-hmm. I think that's all we have on the finance.
But that's a good way to use that now.
We should.
All right, now, fire.
Can I go next?
Yeah.
Mayor Prokem, council members, a few things, a couple things I wanted to hit on as far as code enforcement, first of all. Code enforcement, property maintenance, you've been really getting hammered with a lot of complaints, which is what the nature of the business is, but to share with you and the folks out in public, numerous citations have been issued, so numerous, that right now as of today's date, the next scheduled court date is the 20th. So that's a ways off. And again, doing what's due, in the court system, it takes a while for these things to...
Eleven months away.
So there is use in those on that. Also, something else we kind of, we're wanting to try to get accomplished before winter time, is we're kind of doing a count of basically unsecured properties. We think we're considering unsecured or properties that appear nonhabitable with open or broken windows, doors, or even holes in the walls that we discovered in some areas. So, right now, over the course of the past week, we just had one of our guys that went in from eight four structures.
I was saying, we have a number of eighty.
So, is there a way we could, to see where a pattern would be, maybe put it by ward to where we can see if there's a pattern developing?
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, we started off with one this past week, and another activity going on, but yeah, it's good. Also, this week, the state, state fire marshal was in town, and they were doing elevator inspections, so I wonder, how many elevators does the city of Kennet has? It has seven, seven elevators at the city of Kennet. Yeah, you know, and each one of them got inspected today, again by the state.
Did they all pass?
Inspected by the state fire marshal. Doesn't look, didn't look good. Did not look good, so. Last night, fire and finance committees met, which most of you are aware, except for a couple of them. The main discussion was the purchase of the 21 Pierce Pumper, as well as the 2006 Pierce 100-foot platform. Agreement was reached, they went through First State Community Bank lease financing, financing, and what we're looking at is approximate price of $688,200, at an interest rate of 2.55% over 10 years, with no penalties for early payoff.
Four thousand six hundred fifty dollars a month. Do you want to break that down monthly?
Assuming council approval tonight, documents will be ready for signatures, will be ready on the October 19th, fire.
Council meeting.
So, I spoke with your clean equipment, and they're okay with the situation. Again, we were kind of pushing the 30-day notice on the purchase of the truck, and they were happy to extend it until the end of October, so I think it looks good for that, so we expect from that. Another thing I have for the fire, do we have a resolution? Do I need to speak about that now, or?
It's about to be moved away.
We'll be doing a resolution tonight. What the resolution does is that, and Terry, please help me if I'm, I'm going to understand this, but basically any expenses that we go through as far as the expense on the new fire station, when we started creating these expenses, these expenses from this day forward can be used as far as our own grant, grant cards.
That's true. That's what the technical resolution is.
Go ahead and pass it down.
Make a motion to pass it.
Y'all have a copy of it. So we have a motion to pass the resolution. Motion. Second. Motion and second. Any discussion on this? Okay, we're going to vote on the motion to pass the resolution for the fire equipment, et cetera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passed.
Awesome. Also, to kind of back up on the fire apparatus, again, with this purchase, it's going to drop our oldest apparatus from 54-year-old to 29. Trust that is a great improvement for our city, so excellent. Also, a reminder, if you've got kids, grandkids, kids of all ages that are around schools, this week is fire prevention week, October 4th through 8th, so we are out doing some limited, limited activities with kids, again, due to social distancing requirements, so again, it's not been another good year for getting out there and getting the word out. But if you have anything for me?
Steve, let's work on this motion. So we need a motion to pass the purchase of this equipment.
I make the motion that we do the lease with First State Community Bank, purchase it.
Bob, second.
At the next meeting, they'll be passing formal ordinance, which actually includes the document itself, and the documents themselves.
But tonight, we'll get it rolling.
Tonight, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion? Everybody understand what we're looking at with this thing? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, you got your equipment. Thank you all.
Human resources, I keep that short, I have nothing to add to that right now, but, okay. Humane Department?
The month of September has been extremely busy, extremely. We came close to having nothing all opened, but we've managed to, we've worn around enough that we've been able to continue to pick up and do what we have to do, just not figure out owner surrender. But for the month of September, we took in 59 dogs, we returned back to owner, we did have to use them as four due to aggression, and that was determined not only by us, but by the ASPCA, which we was working on a case. So that's the ASPCA. We transferred 36 of those to rescue, and as of today, we still have 40. So as soon as we ship them out, we ship them right back. We also have one that I'm volunteering every 45 minutes around the block, so it's been some time when it gets to be rough, but we survived.
Somebody wants to volunteer to help with that as well.
Well, hopefully it's going to lose that, or they would just snip around us shipping that. Also, the fair board did the pet picture contest, and they added people's choice or parents' choice for baby contests, and they chose us for recipient of the contest money, which came to $3,609. So that money will go toward whatever medical bills or anything that we need, and that's here at the city. And then we had model listeners that donated a pallet and half of food just in for that. So we got that taken care of. And we've been working with the schools this year and had one class that collected, I believe it was like 71 cans of canned dog food for a dog that came from the same ASPCA situation that had no teeth, so they collected canned dog food for, so we're going to take for it. Just going to say thank you to everybody, and appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Are you on new hours now? Are there any questions? Because I've just, I've gotten a lot of compliments on you in the department lately, so I was just curious, is...
No.
Just going after what you're supposed to do.
Right, yes, if they call us out, then of course we're going to need time, but I do have to say that the police officers are more than willing to collect issues citations if they can, or handle the call minute if they need us to come.
I heard that as well.
Right, that way it eliminates overtime if it's going to be aborted.
I think your department will operate.
Yes, we've had a lot. And also, the sheriff's department, because we have some radical dumped in the back, in the play area, that kind of weighs real low, and the sheriff's department, sheriff has allowed the deputy to bring out a few of the prisoners and let them spread it forth, because we can get a back pour in there and everything, so we're going to work well with sheriff.
You should leave him.
Right.
Very good, thank you. Please.
Mayor Prokem, council. Real quick report on the fair from last week. Everything was very smooth. I think we had one minor altercation throughout the whole week too, and it didn't mount anything other than that, it went really well. I do want to thank Mr. Westerfield for giving the temporary signs opposed to that airport road in burst, and also field for bypass, the temporary back turn only signs uped out greatly with the traffic. We didn't have a lot of congestion, maybe once or twice, the officers may have to be out there and get people moving, but other than that, the traffic went really well. So we didn't have any accidents in those areas, so thank you. Also, a lot of you know we worked on the side over the weekend. I do want to say that under circumstances, we hated for something like this to happen to our community, but the officers came together enough in the sheriff's office, because they stayed out of patrol, and our prosecutor's office, we were here late hours of the night, all of them worked really well together, within four hours of us getting the call, we had a suspect in custody. But all four departments worked very well together, and I'm very proud of that. Don't always go that smooth, but this time it worked out really well. It was long night, but we, I'm very proud of the guys for it. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Did you meet here in the room? I'm sorry. Did you meet with the group in the room? What area was larger than the housing of the police that you had for the...
Oh, for the investigation.
Yes, for the investigation.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Street department. Go ahead and do the whole report.
Mayor Prokem, council members. The street department, right now Knuckles Contractors are working on the intersection of St. Francis and South Jackson, trying to get that done. We got held up a little bit on Van de Venter and Lee due to a phone line, and we can't get the phone company to call us back. We've been trying to get ahold of them for almost two weeks now. I finally got ahold of someone this afternoon after being on hold for several times, almost over an hour, and then I got cut off, so we're going to try tomorrow again to get ahold of them, see if we can't get somebody over there to get that worked out. Until they get that done, we can't make that box any wider over there, which needs to be a little bit bigger to line the pipe, and that's where they're going to put the other pipes under Van de Venter to help that drainage, so hopefully we'll get that taken care of sometime in the next couple of days. When they get finished on South Jackson, I'm assuming they're going to move over to North Jackson and St. Francis. They've got three more to do, St. Francis, North Jackson, and Butler and Lee, and Anthony and Second. They may go on to Butler and Lee because at St. Francis and Jackson and Anthony and Second, they're going to have stormwater work to do on both those intersections. I'm not really sure how they do it, or how they'll do that, but we're winding it down pretty quick.
Didn't we do North Jackson last year?
Do what?
Didn't we do North Jackson and St. Francis?
We did, we did Tatum and North Jackson last year. We added some drains. There was still about a 50, 25 feet, 30 feet or so...
North St. Francis.
Going to St. Francis, it wasn't done. We were going to try to have the street department do it, but we're going to, we're going to add another drain. There's, water comes from the east and the west down St. Francis and goes on to Jackson right there. So we're going to, where they put the drain on the east side, we're going to add another one to the west side, and they're going to come all the way out to St. Francis, so that will be connected there.
And they're going to do this out on the south?
Uh, they're, yes.
On the South Jackson area?
They're, they're working on that now, and I talked to them today, there will be a small swell in the one, so that the water will run down the edge of St. Francis into the drain that is on the west side, and it'll come off of Jackson towards St. Francis right there. We've kind of had to do that in order to keep it from puddling up because of elevation.
I'll be bubbling now.
Yeah, it may be. I was listening to that. I tried to get the weather a while ago. Hey, it shouldn't do as bad as it has in the past, though. It should do good. But, yeah, they'll do a little bit there, they're actually going to add one more drain and hook it into the big box that's on the other side.
And it will help?
Yeah, it will help, and we've got that 24-inch line cleaned out, and that's what they're going to be doing work on Van de Venter, but it goes from 24 down to 12.
Some of that water will go towards Van de Venter then?
All of that water will, it goes across country to Van de Venter, yes, and it goes from Van de Venter into a WPA line and down Lee Street, so right now it goes to Van de Venter to a 12-inch pipe, and then kind of slows up and ready to put.
Anything you can do?
We were going to put another 24 under Van de Venter, but we, I talked to the contractor, and what we've come up with is two 15s instead of one 24. That way they don't have to go as deep as they were, they can put them two side by side, it'll do as good or better, and get that on going out of there, and hopefully that's going to help us out a little bit with getting some of that out of the other place, a little bit quicker anyway.
I'll begin.
The street department right now is pouring sidewalk on Kennet Street from 7 to 9. We did on the east side last year, and we're doing the west side now, trying to get some of that taken care of down there, that's a pretty busy road. We'll head back north after we get down there, and we don't have a whole lot to do down there, and then a lot of that will be looking good. Cleaning it is the biggest issue. We cleaned it, hoping some people would kind of take over for it, what they have it, but we, we've got another plan to try to do it a little bit quicker than the backhoe. We actually bought a bucket for our skid steer to, just, it's five foot wide, we got four foot sidewalk, so we can zip down through there pretty easy and clean a lot quicker than we were with the backhoe. That's all we've got for the street department to go. Have any questions?
Stay up there, wait for your guy coming up to you, since you're here.
I can go first, or you want to get up here? You want to get up here beside me?
No.
It's just good to sit down. All right, one of the issues with, so this is stormwater report. We had issues with our sweeper, and when we brought it to committee, to the council last...
Last meeting.
Last meeting. We had certain requirements that the council expressed that they needed, as in 175,000 for the current sweeper, and we met all those requirements, we were able to pull that off. And so we're looking to get rid of the current, we've got the ability to get rid of the current sweeper for, what was it, 175,000? Yeah, thank you. And, which is what our goal was, and we're able to get the purchase of the new sweeper from a company that's been in existence for a long time and not having any trouble with, instead of being in one of the Carolinas that's in St. Louis.
What was the difference in price?
113,000.
And that's going to come out of the stormwater?
Yes.
And we have the ability to do such, okay?
So all requirements, requirements have been made, but we need to locate it and carry that off to Scott.
Yeah, I might be off to say that.
Okay, so we have a motion before us to trade off the old sweeper and purchase the new sweeper, and use money from the stormwater fund to do such. Any further discussion?
Is that a single engine?
Yes, it is.
Your wife is a single?
Sorry.
Your wife is a single?
It's going to be the same thing as what we had, it's just a Elgin instead of a Johnson.
Is it a two-engine?
No, yes, it's a single engine, yes.
That's what he says.
I'm sorry, it's the same type sweeper, it's a vacuum sweeper, but will be, yes, it has a single engine, so it should cut down half our fuel consumption. And add oil changes and everything, yes.
And we're not going to be looking to trade it off again next year, right?
No. This is an Elgin we've had, we've had Elgin's the whole time I've been down.
Sounds like we didn't do our homework on the first one.
I was started before I got in there, so that was, that was in the process when I, I got in, so.
That's the only bad thing, because we lost some money.
Well, we got, how many years of service out of it?
We got a little over two years, I think.
For $55,000.
And our biggest issue with that was, the people we bought it from are no longer a dealer.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say the biggest issue with that was, the people we got it from are no longer a dealer, so we have to get parts from other places, and if we have to have it worked on, they're going to have to come out of Carolina, or we're going to have to take it from Carolina, as opposed to St. Louis.
And that's where the quarters?
For Elgin, that's where they are, yes.
Northern Carolina.
And the key equipment?
Elgin is... Oh, key, yes.
Yeah, key equipment's in, up around St. Louis, and we've dealt with them a lot. That's where we got our camera trailer from too.
And this trade-in include the repairs that need to be done on the ground sweep?
Yes, yes.
There going to be a warranty on the new one?
You what?
There won't be any warranty on the new one?
Yes. It has for sure one year, and he was checking to see if it might, could get along, could be more, but it for sure has one year. That's what the Johnson had when we bought it.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you all.
I also noticed that we had the monstrous piece of stormwater equipment in the parade. I hear the citizens paid attention to that, because that just broke down the highway there. I think it's impressive for what they're doing.
It's doing a good job too, that along with the camera truck, we're making good headway. If we could just get more employees, we need more people at the street department.
Melissa?
We're now hiring.
Melissa?
Now hiring.
Thank you.
That will come up next budget year.
Y'all don't have anything yet, so all I've got. Thank you all, thank you.
Victor?
Well, I've got a little something. Wanted to remind everybody about, well, this is the time of the year, the leaves are turning colors and looking pretty, and then falling in the street. You heard, we're having a little trouble with the street sweeper, so I'd like to see that the residents of Kennet, if you've got a storm drain in front of your house, it's not going to hurt anything if you want to rake the leaves off the top of it, keep it clean. Any help would be greatly appreciated. Talk to Keith today, we've got about roughly 17,000 drain boxes, or, I'm sorry, 1700, 1700 drain boxes, and probably that many culverts and pipes, you know, but, so any help would be greatly appreciated. Just like to remind everybody that we have ordinances that prevent the blowing or dumping of leaves, or yard clippings in the roadways, or ditches. There's a couple different ways you can get rid of the leaves. We have compost facility that's free to the citizens of Kennet to use, you can take your leaves out there for free, you can use a lawn mower, mulch them yourself, fertilize for your yard, and may be able to burn them if you contact the fire department first, and the wind's under 7 miles an hour, so we may need some help keeping leaves out of streets this year.
So help yourself by, and help the community by keeping those storms clean.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And I have nothing on industrial right now.
City citizens, John? We're going to try to have a meeting, we was going to this week, but I think with finance meeting Thursday, I would be looking at it next week, but we'll get with them sometime in the small town, so you'll be able to know when that is.
Yes.
Unfinished business, anybody have any unfinished business? I have nothing right now. New business, we've approved the resolution on the tenant already, so if you're there. I do not have a mayor pro temp or something, I don't have a public comment. Would you like to say anything to the community? Taylor?
Good evening, my name is Chad Crafton, resident of War 3, and my purpose here this evening is just to, I think you got a letter in your packet maybe that shows I've expressed what to finish up the War 3 council and see.
Uh, new business, we've approved the resolution in the tent already, so we're there. I do not have a mayor pro temp request, and I don't have a public comment. Would you like to say anything to the community? You what? Mayor?
Good evening, my name's Judge Crafton, uh, resident of War Three. And, uh, my purpose here this evening is just to, I think you got a letter in your packet maybe that shows I've expressed, uh, want to finish up the work we're encountering, see? And that's why I wanted to be here tonight. Uh, the call was made last meeting, come out, or you will come and let their, be known their...
Their interests.
Interest, and the position that I would be interested in, position. Primarily to be on the inside, out of the hospital, try to get that moving and get force. So, I would appreciate consideration for that, see? Thank you all.
What is this, what she do for that here?
Mayor appoints council project.
Anybody have any further comments? We're gonna go into closed session. If anyone wants to make a motion to close this meeting.
How much motion?
Does everyone give them all in favor? That's the call. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.